The meeting is now called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lean?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krachek?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 8th, 2017. Prior to standing up for the Pledge of Allegiance, we would just like to acknowledge the passing of Nancy Henker. She died on July 20th at the age of 60. Nancy, along with her husband Larry, made significant contributions to Stone Harbor through over 35 years of operating Neptune Jewels and the shop for Papagallo on 96th Street. And Nancy will be missed by this community. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, first, on our agenda, we're going to be swearing in our new police officer. Resolution 2017 S-179.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, I'd like to offer Resolution Number 2017-S-179 for adoption.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krachek?
Yes. Mr. Parsick? Yes. Should tell everybody what this is. This resolution is to appoint a full-time police officer, Ms. Shawna Dixon, to the Stone Harbor Police Department.
Oh, I wonder.
Hi, Shawna Dixon. Do you solemnly swear, do you solemnly swear that I will faithfully and partially and justly, that I will faithfully and justly and partially perform all the duties, perform all the duties of the office of police officer, of the police officer, according to the best of my ability, according to the best of my ability, so help me God. So, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, congratulations and welcome, Shawna.
Yes, we do. We have two.
Hello, Mayor. It's Tom Hutchinson from 89th Street. I wanted to send you a quick note to comment on something that happened to me in Stone Harbor last weekend. After the triathlon, which I did, I joined a group of athletes at the Burger Bar on 96th Street. I parked on 97th and paid the meter to cover me for two hours. When I was heading back to the car, I realized that I stayed longer than two hours, so I was not surprised to see a ticket on my windshield. However, when I removed the ticket and discovered it was only a warning notice, I was amazed. It is the little things like this that make Stone Harbor the seashore at its best. Small gestures like this will keep people coming back to Stone Harbor to spend money and support the economy. The town looked great as always. I am looking forward to my return again in August.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Yes.
This one is from Gil Gordon. This is my annual email to the mayor and DPW head to let you know how much we continue to enjoy our visits here. We started coming here with our kids when they were toddlers and came for many years, then started coming back again when our kids had their kids. This week, it was with three grandkids and their parents. I get up early in the morning to walk and always see the DPW crews hard at work. It is obvious they all take pride in their work, whether it's picking up garbage, watering the flowers, or anything else. It's a pleasure to be here for many reasons, not least of which is the way the town always looks fresh and clean. This year, I convinced my cousin to come for a week with her kids and grandkids, and they enjoyed it so much, they'll be back next year. Keep up all the good work and give our thanks to all the hard-working employees.
And thank you, Mr. Gordon, and good job by Public Works. So, can I have a motion on the communications?
Madam Mayor, I move we accept the communications.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? At this time, we'll have public comment. Anyone wishing to address Mayor and Counsel may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is George Kaiser. I live at 35895th Street, have since 1978. And first of all, I wanted to mention my appreciation for this process because I'm not a resident, but I've been here a long time, and it's really open communication. It was great to sit here and hear the things you're facing and hear the exchange between you with the issues that you are facing. So, I think it's a great, great new process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple ideas sitting there. Sinage on the streets. Maybe you could do those things like they have at the outside malls, maybe at both ends of the town, rather than signage. You don't want people quickly turning into spots anyhow. But maybe you could put those kind of, it could be a kiosk, or it could just be a sign with the businesses saying, "You are here, and you know where you could go," kind of thing.
Several years ago, we addressed that, remember, with the wayward signs? I don't know what happened.
Or maybe somehow something that indicates what's open. Maybe a little slide, something, but, yeah.
Yeah. If you really want to get fancy, you could make it four-sided and have it be computerized, and then you could put menus and drop things behind it, you know? And maybe the businesses would partner with Stone Harbor to support something like that.
Yeah.
One thing on recycling, listening to it, listening to what was going on, I got a big white barrel I got years ago for recycling, and it's terrific. And the, I used to get from, I still do, from Chamber of Commerce, there's stickers that go on the outside of the barrel. And I'm a duplex, so I ran upstairs, and I'm constantly throwing acne bags, you know, the bags away and dumping the thing. Maybe we could get a sticker for that that says what you want us to do with not just what's included, but no bags, you know? Those kind of things that we could put on there that would help people understand.
Excuse me just for a minute. One of the things that we have to let the public know is that can that you're using is illegal. We have specific cans that they have to use because of the weight of it. I don't know how filled it gets, but according to our contracts, they can only, you know, they lift so much, but if it's too heavy or too cumbersome to lift, they prefer the 32-gallons with the lids on them, if at all possible, attached. That's not an ordinance, that's not a resolution, but it's something that PW wants to address.
I think I have the same white can you have, and it's a small can.
It's a small can.
Is it tiny?
I put new rope handles on it. The guys love it because.
Oh, okay.
It's only about this high. It's not a big, tall one.
It's kind of flip it over, so I think it's a.
It's small. I don't know which one you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the other thing, you could mail that sticker out with, you know, the tax bill, so we, everybody get it and get the information about it. I'm on 95th Street between Third and Second, and parking still continues to be pretty challenging. And I'm sure it's not in our just little half-block. I'm sure it's the blocks, a couple blocks from downtown. And if you get into the conversation or, you know, ideas about that resident parking or something, it would be helpful. Because it, you know, I'm 11:30 at night, I'm running out to get a spot, you know, to save it, and it's kind of annoying. So, anything you can do there would help. The other thing is tractor-trailers. I don't know if, one season, if you can say you don't want any coming into town or not, but the ones coming out of Fred's and going there, they're, you know, I see the beer brands, and they have both kinds of trucks going. Some of them are tractor-trailer, and other ones are just, you know, the panel, big panel truck size. So, I don't know if you can ordinance against that, or make it temporary, or what, but I think it would be a big advantage. And then the third thing coming, we seem to get a lot of speeders, especially at night, coming out feeling good. And I didn't know if you put bumps in, you know, you can put bumps in a, on a road or not, but, you know, that would help us, you know, slow the cars down at least, and I think people would be aware that they were, they were there. That's it for me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Lots to think about. Thank you.
Good ideas. Keep thinking. I like the speed bumps.
Hi, I'm Paul Cates. I'm with Modest Associates. We're appointed as the Planning Board Planner, and we'll be undertaking the master plan reevaluation. So, I just wanted to introduce myself, and if you guys have any questions, concerns you want addressed by the master plan review, obviously you can address anyone on the subcommittee or get ahold of us.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Anybody else?
My name's Craig Williams. I live at 11605 Paradise Drive. How you doing, Charles? Miss Mayor? Ladies and gentlemen, I have to right a wrong. The, the problem at our place is that we're devastated by decisions that were made back, I think probably in the late 70s and early 80s. The property is very, very compromised, and it was somebody's decision back then that, that made this happen. Can I take 15 seconds to approach the painting behind you, Miss Mayor? Would that be all right? Thank you.
You said 11605?
Correct. Paradise. I can almost tell from this is from like the 80s. This is from when they started with some of these. But they're out here now, aren't they?
No. Go back to your left.
This is all extended.
Left. Left.
And you can see the point.
Hundred and sixteen, 116th Street.
Right? So, here you're coming in. Here's Paradise.
Yeah, this.
Do you have that street end right there? No.
No. The hands are just northwest. Ours is the huge parking lot driveway. I don't have that gentleman's problem. There's no bigger parking spot than my place.
This is the hands?
Hands is, oh, yeah, that's it. There's the dark one. This is the dark right here. See how much parking lot there is?
Yep.
Okay. If I can continue to talk here. So, this isn't an old one? This is recent?
No, this is old.
It's old.
Old.
But you're on it.
They kept them going here. I don't know. Maybe they did. All right.
No.
No, they didn't.
No.
All right. So, this.
That's all.
Change. Okay. Because this is all changed, obviously. The dredging, and now there's a new river. I, I call it Williams River. I'm not being facetious. There's a place called Williams River in my mind, and I've been studying it for over 10 years. I don't call this Bird Sanctuary. I call it Lake Bird Sanctuary.
Okay.
My good friend Terry with Baroness is here, north end. All the water flows. I jumped the fence, and I hit the net. Police, police aren't here, so. About three, I just went about as far as the tallest tree in all the southern end of the Bird Sanctuary is directly across from.
Okay. I'm going to just interrupt you a second. I need you to just go, "Yeah," because if you, we can get you recorded. You're not being recorded.
Right.
To make, it'll be difficult.
This indentation is now growing. It's a river. I mean, it's, the river's going underneath.
What's he talking about?
Underneath what I call a main channel. You can keep on calling it basin, but. Hey, I lived in the 60s and 70s in, on 104th Street. I know what Carnival Bay is. Okay. What we have there, pleasant as can be, because the water flows through, and now with the dredging, you know, nobody's having trouble with their boats. Okay. But whatever happened in that decision, they changed millions and millions of years of, I think nine months a year, northeast winds are prevailing. Three months, like now, the pleasant southwest. Okay. What's happening here, the, the old bulkhead's now showing from behind the new one. I mean, we've seen one hole, but now it's many holes forming along our little walkway to the dock. We have a beautiful dock. It was redone right after Hurricane Sandy knocked the old one down, probably cost my mother-in-law $10,000. By the way, I should add, I'm not the owner, but my mother-in-law is. She doesn't move too much, but I've been married to her, her youngest for 30 years now. And I, I just can't see this going on and on. I wanted to thank Officer Jackson because on the 114th Street, by the way, I call all of these spines, and there's no greater spine than Third Avenue and 96th Street, obviously. Paradise Drive is a, is a blob. It's, it's meant by whoever was engineering way a long time ago. They, they, they basically decided they wanted water to be shunted down towards the beautiful bridge. In fact, the concrete that lines Third Avenue on each side, it stops short of the end of the fence on the southern end of the Bird Sanctuary. So, there's a, there's a concerted effort. I don't, I don't crawl down there. There are men, I assume some women, but men who have crawled down in that, because it's directly across from us also, is a manhole. So, there are people that know all the inner workings down there, and it's just not advertised. Nobody puts a, a weekly update on, on the flow of water. But this is fresh water. I've even just detected this year different kinds of birds. The seagulls rarely come around, and there's so many.
Just for clarification, is the water coming onto your property from the bay, from the Bird Sanctuary?
Right.
Not on your property? I'm just trying to figure out.
Four times a day, water flows through there. Tide comes in, goes out, tide comes in, tide goes out. So, those four times a day. And we see, we tried, we got, you probably know the McNeil family. Rob tried to put a big, what you call it, plank, you know? What kind of thin plank is that? I'm looking for a P-word. Plywood.
Plywood.
Very thick plywood, yeah.
Plywood.
And we paid him, and he's a friend, and it didn't do anything. But now it just moved to another. So, this bulkhead is failing mainly on our north side with the border with the hands. You know, the hands property's also very old. So, we have this big reservoir out in front of us, like I said, a big parking lot driveway. There's this big extra flow of Paradise Drive, nowhere else on the island. There's nothing quite like the Bird Sanctuary. And if you go out to the beach, you have, at the northern end, you have the, the nunnery, the convent. I, I always, you know, I've been thinking about this problem for over 10 years. I speculate all this talk about Wildwood's nearly three-quarter mile, by the way, I just went to the boardwalk last night, first time in four years, and I love that beach. It looks, and it's from us.
Huge.
I think it comes from flowing east out and west where we're talking about. It's not going to flow away from 96th Street, 104th Street. It's going to flow from somewhere close to where everything is changing all the time. I mean, I remember growing up, the channel didn't look like the channel with all the new marsh, you know, from 100th Street to about 100.
Can I interrupt just a moment, because I'm a little confused here? Your property sits on Paradise Drive?
Correct.
Correct? So, you're, you're talking about the water that's coming from the channel into your bulkhead, making holes?
Going into the Bird Sanctuary, coming back.
You see it actually flow across the street?
No.
What?
No. It's the absolute problem is underwater. And I have a whole proposal, because I've been thinking about this for so long. I might have mentioned it to you one night, didn't I? Or maybe you were talking about things you do so well, Charles. But my proposal would be to take that northern property, I mean, right along the boundary line with the hands, make a six-wide, six, first of all, 100-foot-long sluiceway is what my idea is, to go from the bulkhead out to wherever that lands, like, you know, Third Avenue or just Paradise Drive, or into the Bird Sanctuary. Make a sluiceway. Make it 100 feet long, make it six feet wide, make it.
I think first we could have Grant meet Mr. Williams and see what he's talking about.
Dr. Williams.
Dr. Williams. I'm sorry. I apologize. Because I'm not getting too much of a visual.
I don't understand.
Oh, this is a concept.
Okay.
How old is the existing bulkhead where you see it failing?
My father-in-law's still alive.
Judy, may I interrupt for just a moment?
12 years ago.
Do you think it would be feasible for him to draw up a concept and present it to Counsel?
No, I think first we got to see what is being referenced.
I need to know what he's talking about.
Right. So, I think first we would have, like, Grant go see.
I was just about to say that. In fact, first I was going to talk about today's wonderful article by Dr. Lenore.
Tedesco.
I don't know her, but she's talking about the beauties of this Lake Bird Sanctuary. You won't catch me saying Bird Sanctuary. She's talking about the beauties of what, what kind of change has gone on. And she says, "Oh, you would have loved it." And of course, I remember as a child, the dunes in Avalon were sky-high, and the Point had dunes that were very pleasant, too. I mean, you, you went out there, you felt you were in the wilds. Now, it's just a flat, nice beach, and everybody likes that, too. But I liked the way it was back in the 60s when I was a little boy. So, but anyway, the, the notion of all seeing it is what I'm even thinking about. Also, I also, just, just an article I cut out, I put it.
And Charles, to Charles's question, what, the bulkhead is like, how old then?
I think Mr. Williams mentioned it's 12 years old about.
Yeah, I think, my father-in-law died in 2006. I think it was before he died that they put it in, yes.
45?
It's a vinyl bulkhead.
It doesn't have the creosote that the old one does. Oh, it has creosote on it, yes.
It does? Okay. So, is it the, the actual, I mean, I, obviously, I think you're right. I think the first step is to have.
Somebody else go look at it. Do you have any idea from being on the Bird Sanctuary or for anything? I think that, you know.
Identify the bulkhead.
And try, try, see what's happening.
I've accomplished something. I appreciate it. I invite all 13, I did count before I came, all 13 of you. It could be tomorrow at noon, it could be noon, let's say, the day that we're going to meet again. Would that be two weeks from now? I mean, I don't really want to meet again, but I'd love to see anybody come out tomorrow.
Well, I think what we'll do is we'll just ask our administrator to ask Grant to come around, knock on your door, and say, "Could you please tell me what you're talking about?" Correct?
Who's Grant?
The head of Public Works, Director of Public Works.
I appreciate that.
Joe?
[inaudible].
Okay. So, somebody through the Administrator's office will be in touch with you, and we'll try to get a hand on what you're talking about.
I have a line on the decking of my bulkhead where I say, "You sit here, and you see everything I see." Three feet on each side, and you can go, and I just, I have this proposal that would be immense, but not too expensive, because you can imagine the alternative expense. I mean, I'm not calling up anybody of an attorney nature. I'm not calling up a reporter. Like, I also brought the article about, you know, on Sunday, the, you know that the Inquirer did something about South Cape May being no longer there?
Yes. Yeah, and it slipped into the ocean in like 1905.
This is the whole weirdness.
It was just in the paper this week in the Inquirer.
And of course, we know that the Bird Sanctuary, Lake Bird Sanctuary should, should be breathing more. Everybody talks about it. There should be better birds. And that's why I'm saying, I'm seeing better birds, because the water, you could see where it sort of comes up and into the marsh, and then, it's really incredible how, how bad our place is. And I hate to put an ultimatum on it, but I think it should be done like, I don't know, in the next eight months or so. A proposal start, just because I know when I come back in May, I, I leave in October, come back in May from Florida. That's where my permanent residence is. I would love to just hear a proposal in the month or two before I come back up in May. Wouldn't that be just, even a minor proposal before you go on to the?
That's ambitious, but, just saying.
Well, I mean, some kind of, some kind of notion that I arrive with a, with a plan.
Well, I think first we'll have, we'll be reaching out to you.
We need to assess what's actually going on.
Yeah.
There really needs to be an assessment.
And your name's Jill Gouffer?
Jill Goucher.
Gouffer?
Jill Goucher. She can get your phone number and.
That's not a safe. Gouger?
And get you in touch with some people.
Oh, yes, I can self-report. Appreciate it, Miss Mayor.
Sir, what was the address? I'm sorry, what was the address on? 11605. I'm sorry? 11605 Paradise Drive. And we have, and I don't want to brag, it's far and away the best sunset you could ever see on our, I mean, it's just amazing how good it is. And I would hate to see our backyard no longer be a backyard, you know?
Okay. All right. We'll take a look at it. Did you dredge? Did you dredge your dock this year? Over here.
The dredge?
Did you dredge your dock this year?
No, I heard all about it as I was down there, right in the spring. They, they took care, Terry again, Terry Ives, he's, you know, got the Baroness. He and I are best friends, Gloria as well, and Mrs. Ives. And, yeah, they, he gave me updates every other day. Says, "Yeah, this is great for my boat." And I said, "More power to you," because I, I'm his first mate many times on his boat. I, I like boaters to have a lot of good, good action, but I'd like to see my house have some good action, too, you know? Thank you, Ms. Rich.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else you'd like to address, Mayor and Counsel? Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 1503.
Madam Mayor, I ask that ordinance 1503 be taken up on first reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1503 on first reading?
An ordinance amending ordinance 1330, Chapter 345, Section 345-24, fees.
Madam Mayor, I ask that ordinance 1503 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading, and adoption at a meeting of Mayor and Counsel to be held on the 5th day of September 2017.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lean?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krachek?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1504.
Mayor and Counsel, I move that ordinance number 1504 be taken up on first reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1504 on first reading?
An ordinance amending Chapter 4, the revised general ordinances of the borough Stone Harbor, 2005, balloons and aerial luminaries.
This ordinance is that, we've discussed this in, in Counsel before, banning the release
This ordinance is that, we've discussed this in, in Council before, banning the release of balloons, Mylar balloons, and, and aerial luminaries. So I move that ordinance Number 1504 be passed on first reading, and that it be published according to law, and that it be taken up for second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of Mayor and Council to be held on the 5th day of September 2017.
Second.
I think it's the 15th, isn't it?
Oh, the 5th of September.
5th of September.
I'm sorry.
Who would you, the second, we did get a second. Clerk call the roll?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krachek?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Ordinance 1505.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to take up ordinance 1505 on the first reading.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is an ordinance by the borough of Stone Harbor, designating the Department of Public Works to install and maintain signs associated with the municipal public access plan. Madam Mayor, I offer move that ordinance 1505 be passed on first reading. That it be published according to law, and that it be taken up for second and third and final readings and adoption at a meeting of Mayor and Council to be held on August 15th or September 5th. September 5th? September 5th.
I'm going to back up because we neglected to have the Clerk read the title only of ordinance 1505 on first reading.
An ordinance of the borough of Stone Harbor, designating the Department of Public Works to install and maintain all signs associated with the municipal public access plan.
Now the motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that ordinance 1505 be passed on first reading. That it be published according to law, and that it be taken up for second, third, and final readings and adoption at a meeting of Mayor and Council to be held on September 5th. Second.
Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krachek?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-180.
I'd like to offer 2017 S-180 for adoption.
Second.
This is a refund for duplicate tax payment.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krachek?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-181.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2017 S-181 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution extends the grace period for the tax, current tax bills that are being mailed out up until August 16th.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krachek?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-182.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2017 S-182 for adoption.
Second.
This is a change order with ardbuck paving. It's a decrease in amount, which we all like to hear. Let's see, I have the amount.
Ten thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, $10,150.6.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krachek?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Resolution 2017 S-183.
Mayor and Council, I offer Resolution Number 2017-S-183 for adoption.
Second.
This, this resolution allows the, the borough to accept payment from organizations that are hiring our police department within the borough, such as Atlantic City Electric or the Yacht Club, so that we can accept the fees and then, and then reimburse the police officers that were involved in the overtime.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krachek?
Yes.
Mr. Parsick?
Yes.
Having no items on the agenda for discussion, may I have a motion approving the bill list?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the bill list and authorize the CFO to pay the